Be excited about what's happening in the state and send to our city. Lord, we give you honor and praise, everything you do for us, in Christ's name, amen.
Salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your presence here. And I think we can get through this agenda pretty quickly. We are expecting a group to do a presentation on broadband, and they are coming from different directions. So, we will take care of that when we get to announcements. Okay, we just submitted a grant to entity to help us with what we're trying to do in the Dotson Park. If you have been driving through, then you will notice that we made upgrades. We painted the interior and exterior, and we have some other plans to upgrade that problem park. I'm so proud that this summer, there was an outpouring of interest in our young people. Various groups did various things to support our children. And I see a need to really pay some attention to Dotson Park. And I think you will be very pleased at the outcomes that we will have. We've, we got the limo loader, excited about that. I've learned all about hydraulic lift and all this stuff, and of course, you don't have to worry about seeing me driving it around in town, but it is a piece of equipment that, that the workers needed, and it helps to lessen the burden on them. We've got another project we submitted through our consultant, Robbie Waxman. And we will give you more details on that as it progresses. I'm really proud of the job that Public Works did during the rain. We did have some problems in District A. We had some erosion of the road, but they were able to fix that in District D. We had the bridge on Pruitt Street. So, we got that fixed, and I'm sure your constituents have had the campus.
They were.
They were, and so were you.
Absolutely.
They worked very hard, and, and we don't have a large staff, but we spread out and do the best job we can with what we have, so the best encouragement you can give is say thank you when you see a Public Works person, because they work, as I've said so many times, in extreme heat or inclement weather such as rain, and they deserve our appreciation. Okay, um, we have some other announcements, but I'm going to reserve some time to our presenters. Have they started arriving yet with the broadband? No one has, has come yet, okay. Are there any district announcements? Let me take this time to welcome Mrs. Prater to the Bachelor City Council. We're looking forward to working with her. And would you like to say something at this time, Mrs. Prater?
Yes, I'm grateful to be here in the city. My husband's sitting, well now it's my seat, now I'm saying I'm a Prater. I just thank God leaving the opportunity to serve District B.
Thank you, Ms. Prater. Okay, item number four. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve previous minutes' regular meeting, August eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Properly moved, and second, any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Item number six, consideration of and action on reports of committees appointed of the governing body. Do we have any reports? Any district reports? Chiefs? Anything you want to say? Brings us to item number seven, reports of city officials and employees required by law or by action of the governing body. Item A, Finance Committee Report, Resolution Twenty-two, two zero one, four, bills and claims for the month of August. Mr. Shaw?
Yes, I, we, uh, we have reviewed the, uh, financial report for the month of August, and everything was fine. And I appreciate all the, all that's gone in, especially our employees, who's done such a good job, little men, Val.
I'll entertain a motion.
And, uh, I don't think it's, but anyway, just say thank you, and, uh, if we didn't, did well on all that, I'll, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
I don't have a motion for that, Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Properly moved and second, any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Action, ordinance, and resolution introduced at previous meetings. A, Ordinance Twenty-two, forty-two, sixty-five, and ordinance to authorize an act of sale by the City of Bastrop to sell adjudicated property described as parcel zero one two zero one, zero zero one, zero zero, zero, zero eight. Hope nobody was counting. Lots eight and nine on block two of Haney Addition, the town of Bastrop, Louisiana, as plot there in Notoria Book Forty-six, page seventy-three of the records of Moiles Parish, Louisiana, in accordance with L.A. revised statute forty-seven, twenty-two, zero-two, E.T.S.E.Q. and to authorize the mayor of Bastrop to sign all necessary documents and to address their matters relative thereto. Ms. Goldman, you want to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. Next ordinance and the next ordinance, forty-two, sixty-six. We did have a, a public hearing at by forty-five, and they, no one had any comments on it. But forty-two, sixty-five, a Mr. Frank and Geraldine Payton bidded on it, and their bid is two thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. And it's for a fiscal address of one twenty Haney.
Okay. Everything meets the requirements here? Ms. Goldman?
Yes, ma'am.
We're ready to entertain a motion? To take action on ordinance as stated and introduce that previous meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
On second.
Properly moved, and second, any question? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance, this is our item B, number eight. Ordinance Twenty-two, forty-two, sixty-six, and ordinance to authorize an act of sale by the City of Bastrop to sell adjudicated property described as parcel zero zero, three, zero, zero, four, zero, zero, six, zero, 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 one, six, lot sixteen, block six, lighter in bulk. Washington Addition, plot book, uh, number two, page sixty-five, and one half of street adjoining lot sixteen, closed and booked by ordinance number nine-nine, three-eight-six-two by the City of Bastrop in accordance with Louisiana revised statute forty-seven, twenty-two, zero-two. And to authorize the mayor of Bastrop to sign all necessary documents and to address their matters relative thereto. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, uh, a Mr. Willie Chapman Jr. bidded on it. His bid was three thousand, five fifty-six, thirty-nine, and it's, uh, property at twelve-thirty Bearin Street.
Okay, everything meets the requirement, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion. On, properly moved, and second?
As second.
Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, other unfinished business. Discussion, action, bids for street program.
Mr. Patrick? Mayor, City Council? Uh, if you've had a chance to look at the bid results, we had five potential bidders on the project, but we only had one turn in a bid. I checked with the other bidders, they were all just too busy, they said they couldn't get to it, didn't have the personnel to do it. The one bid we got was three million, six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and nine cents. Our estimate on the job was around two point two million. This bid is high, it, uh, the unit prices came in pretty high from this one bidder. Uh, if you want to break it out by street, I had sent Ms. Goldman an email, and breaking it out by street, Parkhurst Avenue is four hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. Briscoe Avenue would be two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents. Colliers Lane would be five hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. West Hickory Avenue, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and four cents. And Henry Avenue, three, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-six cents. Uh, the original budget we established for this whole project was two point seven million. We anticipated it coming in at two point two, however, we only have one bidder. Uh, you, you've got options, you can choose to reject all bids and bid it again at a later date. But however, what we're seeing is still an uptrend in bid prices. We don't expect that to go down till sometime possibly next year, along with the fuel prices. So, as of right now, that's probably the best bid you're going to get at this point in time, unless you wait till sometime next year. Other than rejecting all the bids, you possibly could delete a, some of the scope of the project, delete an entire street, for instance, delete portions of each street if you wanted to. Uh, delete, delete, less used portions of some of the streets, say like Henry in front of the wastewater plant, there's not the three houses, I think, there. And then West Hickory behind the grocery store, which I think may be two houses. Those two blocks right there would help cut down some of the costs significantly. Just a couple of ideas, I just need to know what the city would like to do, and I can take the appropriate action from there.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. I had asked him to present us with three alternatives, and that would give you a choice of selecting the best option. Mr. Patrick, if you would give the upside and downside, and I think that, uh, the council can make a more informed decision. Just kind of recap what you said, option number one?
Is reject all the bids.
And what's the downside of that?
Well, if you reject all the bids and you try to rebid it right now, there's a good chance you might only get one bid, and it could be even higher.
So, that's what you're facing, rejecting all the bids. Okay, option number two?
Would be to delete some of the, uh, uh, street in its entirety, or possibly portions of each street, to try to bring it down into a budget you can accept.
What's the deadline for seven to those fees?
Uh, about forty-five days. Unless the bidder agrees to extend his bid prices. We haven't had much success on that because of the unknown of the future with the fuel prices and things like that. Most bidders we're dealing with now don't want to go past sixty days. But by our bid documents, it's forty-five days.
Lord, um, I think the thing to do maybe to, to set back and make sure, I hate to lose another year of laying asphalt, you know, on our streets. And I would do my recommendation, get the council together, and, uh, come up and see if there's some opportunities for us to use, and with your guidance to help us. And then, you know, let us get away from it, if I get something.
Because I think everybody needs to speak on behalf of the district, and everybody out here. You shouldn't make that vote based on, based for everybody.
What's, what's the third option?
Is delete portions of, of some of the less used streets, like Henry in front of the wastewater plant, uh, or potentially the, uh, uh, other one behind the grocery store. It's only got two houses only, I think it's a dead-end street, that one block. So, those couple of things might reduce the cost down to an acceptable level.
Is that West Hickory, Grocery Store, West?
Yeah, Rest, West Hickory on the east side, you know, right there, behind that grocery store, it's a dead-end block, right there. That was included as part of the street project. And if you deleted like that one block of it and a block of Henry Street, that would help reduce some of the costs. That's just some suggestions.
So, uh, Mr. Patrick, what is this body looking at in terms of delaying it? What's the worst-case scenario?
If you reject all bids, uh, I would suggest you're going to have to wait till spring for next year, because you don't want to bid a project like this in the dead of winter. You know, with all the rain and everything, we've got a lot of deep sewer that we have to fix first. And that's the first order of business, so as soon as the contract's awarded, they'll start on the deep sewer, and that's your deep, deep. I wouldn't want to start that till after the winter time, if you decide to reject all bids.
I think reject all bids, but I do feel like this council is waiting in on, you're just.
Mayor, we have to call, especially call meeting, so.
It's a pleasure of this body to, to have another meeting, a call meeting, and hope that everybody will show up?
If I show up, at least they can be transparent, and the other councilmen will have their decision.
And then, and stress to them, this is very important, because to lose another year is not good for us.
Okay, can, can we schedule it, um, what about next Thursday?
He said forty-five days, right?
Yeah, we have, we have up to forty-five days to award it, unless the bidder agrees to extend it.
Yeah, I think Ms. Angela had a surgery, so she'll be out by the end of the week. But I can't, I can't see, I can't see who's hurt. Got thoughts on?
Well, you want to just put it on next month's agenda?
Because that's thirty days out, right? About thirty days out.
And I can always talk to the bidder and see if he's willing to go even further than the forty-five days.
So, it is the pleasure of this body to wait until the next council meeting opposed to having a, a call meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So, that's the consensus of it. We want to take some action, but I think that's the action in itself, so.
Quick, not really, quick, are you on a quick?
I think we move to table it until next meeting, so.
Make a motion.
I make the motion to take it to the next city council, regular city council meeting.
Properly moved, and second, any more discussion, Mr. Green?
No, ma'am.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you for driving in.
Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't trying to stop that question, I just wanted to make sure the procedure, it can roll into the agenda without any issues.
My question was, is he going, is he going to go himself, or, or he's not asking to help us, but I don't think he will, because.
Just another person scheduling.
No, that's not going to pick him.
That brings us to item number ten, introduction of and committed action on proposed ordinance and resolution. See, Resolution Twenty-two, twenty-one, five, the resolution of the mayor and board of all of them of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to support BDT Housing for the moving ahead for the progress in the twenty-first century. On Transportation Act funding to F.H.W.A. recreational trail program for the Louisiana. F.R.T.P.L. to acquire, develop, and maintain motorized and non-motorized trails. Former mayor Clarence Hawkins. Am I in the proper place? Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Uh, good evening, mayor and board of all the persons, and to the audience, thank you for allowing me to come. I'm Clarence Hawkins, I reside at twenty-five oh six Providence Avenue in Bastrop, Louisiana. I'm representing BDT Housing. Uh, BDT Housing Group is a nonprofit that has been doing some work in Moiles Parish and Bastrop for the last two, three years, and they asked me to become a part of, of, not really a part of the group, but to give them some insights into Bastrop and Moiles Parish, and to represent them when they're not here. Currently, BDT Housing is working on the farm labor housing development on Naff Avenue, and then another housing project down there. And this is a, a resolution which is required to, uh, be a part of a package to the state of Louisiana for a walking trail. This walking trail is not a part of the City of Bastrop's responsibility. It will be on property that is currently being considered to be developed by BDT Housing. Currently, BDT Housing is in conversation with, with the Dotson family on the property, commonly referred to as the Dotson Farm. This is the property on the north side of Hamilton Street, and Hamilton Street is the street that divides and goes behind Dotson Park, and is going north. It's bound on the south by Hamilton, on the west by Shady Oak. And, uh, there are some other streets that it does contiguous to it. It's about forty acres, and that is being considered to be developed, uh, with mixed-use housing. Uh, this, this property has been before zoning, before to be categorized, to make it appropriate for various uses. This would be a walking trail that's up two, three miles in length. As I said, it's on private property, the City of Bastrop would not be responsible for it. It would be the responsibility of the owners of that property. But the state of Louisiana requires that the governing body be in support of it by adopting a resolution in favor of it, but not having ownership nor responsibility. So, we're asking that you consider adopting favorably this resolution. I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Okay, I, I spoke a little with our former mayor about this project, and I think it's an excellent idea as we're working to improve all of the areas around our parks and in our neighborhoods. And with the upgrades that we're doing at Dotson, I think this is a compliment to the efforts that's going on over there. And it, it's, there's no burden on the city, it's on private property.
That's correct.
Uh, so, I would encourage support of this, because it takes a burden off of us trying to figure out how to clean up the areas. So, do you all have any questions? At this time, I will entertain a motion on this item as presented, Resolution Twenty-two, two zero one, five, as presented by Mr. Hawkins. I'll make the motion. Properly moved? And second? Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
May I add, uh, one of the things that I'm working with this group and other groups to alleviate the lack of affordable, decent housing in Bastrop and Moiles Parish. There are many opportunities, and there are several developers that are doing things in Bastrop and Moiles Parish to provide affordable, decent housing, uh, in, in the area. And we're going to be coming to you, I'm going to be coming to you in the future, to have discussions about opportunities and permissions to make available safe, affordable housing in our community. Uh, it will definitely increase the tax base. I was really glad to hear about the actions that were taken on the adjudicated properties, because by people buying these properties is given a chance to have housing, but also to put it on the tax roll, to put these, these vacant lots that the City of Bastrop is responsible for maintaining and, uh, taking care of, but it's putting it back into public domain, so I really appreciate your actions, and thank you for listening to me. God bless you, and keep taking care of all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, councilman, for being supportive. Item number eleven. Dinet Dunbar, Louisiana, Connected Broadband Feasibility Study by Louisiana Connect L. Is it L.I.T. Communities for the City of Bastrop. Mr. Pierre, can you make contact with some of the folks who were on, on that conference call, because?
I was, I was going to ask Mr. Pierre, but he stepped away and made a direct call.
Okay, okay, and I'll just move around on this agenda. Some had to fly in from different locations, I have invited like the technical college. Let me ask all of our guests to stand up. Who are representing different, uh, entities and bodies? I see the president of police jury, I see Louisiana Delta Community College. Uh, representative from, Representative Fisher's office. Who else do we have representing the business? Arness Jewelers, we have any other representatives?
Moiles General Hospital.
Moiles General Hospital, oh, I need to see you. Been a while since I've seen you. We got K. King. Who else? Who else is hiding out there? I, I don't know what has happened. Ms. Goldman talked to them several times. I sat through, tried to sit through eight hours on, uh, virtual, on broadband, and this is something that's really very important as we move into a new era of time, so we'll wait for Mr. Pierre to get back to that. Okay, we'll go to, I'm going to table that for now, and come back, we'll get into meeting discussion, action, permission to advertise the bids for flooring at Dotson Park. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Florin? Oh, okay. Okay. Properly moved? Is there a second? And second, any question, discussion, Mr. DeValle, I saw Mr. DeValle here.
Good afternoon, mayor, councilman.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm a big part of Dotson Park and a lot of these parks around here. And I'm glad to be on the team of the City of Bastrop. We have done a lot in all our area parks. If you all would go around and, and, and look, you'll see that we not only working in Dotson, but we all around. But we in need of a flow real bad in Dotson Park. Uh, Dotson Park has ridges in the flow, and it's been unsafe for a long time. Uh, tiles coming up, so with all the upgrade that we done done inside and outside, a flow would really set it off for, for us in Dotson Park. We, we, we're coming back, peoples are coming back, and you all just need to go out there and take a look. With the mayor vision and her team, I just want to let you all know, it's looking good, not only in Dotson Park, but Glenys Park looking good. We had did a facial out there, we painted there and different other parks, we got nine parks. And so far, we working around, but it's very important that after all we done done in Dotson Park, the flow was setting off, and it hadn't, hadn't nothing been did in a long time, so on behalf of Dotson Park that I come up in, and a lot of people that know me, that would really set it off for the City of Bastrop. And we are trying to make the City of Bastrop better, and, uh, I think we doing a good job right now.
Thank you. Thank you. We had a motion, and a second, you heard a presentation. Any questions? Mr. Green, you spend a lot of time out there in the summer?
I'm sure a lot of basketball is a little.
There we go, safety, it's a safety issue, we got touring, but, 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 it's a crime, danger, all kinds of rock.
Right. So, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, we're looking forward, we, we're looking forward to giving you a tour. Thank you. Thank you, be real pleased. Thank you for that presentation. That brings us to item number C, appoint a fire chief. We have had Mr., or chief, Timothy Williams serving in the provisional capacity. And he successfully passed the exam. Think we have our former chief sitting back there. Think we have our former chief sitting back there. How you doing? It is my pleasure to offer as an appointment to probational chief, Chief Timothy Williams. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
That's one of them. I'll make the most.
Probably moved. Second. And I got all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Tim.
Thank you. This is a moment that that means a lot to uh Chief Williams. And he comes from a line of firefighters. And we want to make this moment special for him. And we're gonna do a ceremony and ask his wife and his two girls. Anybody else I think you want to?
Take all my father. Your father, your daughter, what you saying?
If you ever wanna fight the chief.
I'm a dog father.
Set a bodyguard. It is my pleasure to pin his badge of honor on the chief. We're so proud of you and the work that you do. You know, this is an essential service. We hold to the word.
Thank you, council members, and thank you, Mayor. Uh thank you for my wife and family for always supporting me. Thank God for making it possible. All of my members, they've always supported me and the ones that taught me how to do it, you know, and the ones that support me now and they always got my back. And thank y'all all for having the confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations. Okay, this brings us down to item D. Appoint assistant clerk. This position is now open uh as a result of a resignation. And I offer as an appointment for assistant clerk, Ms. Teresa Holmes. She's down on the aisle, stand up for a minute. Everybody see the top of your head behind that uh monitor. But she has been with us how long, Ms. Gold?
Fourteen. Fifteen, fourteen, fourteen years.
And she, you, there's something you were saying, Ms. Holmes.
Thank you for the consideration. It's not lost on me that tomorrow will mark twenty years. Of service for me. So I appreciate your confidence in me now. Thank you.
That was all I needed, Ms. Holmes. Probably moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, it's been two emotional moments here.
Uh, second. Mr. Shaw for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Okay, appoint historic district commissioner member. Okay, who's here to speak on that? Me? Okay. Okay, I'll point, is it Ms. Carpenter?
No, it's Cindy.
Cindy? I saw Cindy. Okay. Okay, at this time, I offer as an appointment, Ms. Andrews. You can come. As a historic district commissioner member, I know that you have been very active in the community for many, many years and and advocate for many different causes. This is your baby to say whatever you would like to say to this body.
Well, I didn't know I was gonna have to say anything. If I said I was speechless, everybody would really laugh. But um I will say that we have a lot of things that we can do for Bastrop. I'm glad, I'm glad it's going in the right direction. Our town um and our historic places, not, I don't think enough of us really realize what we do have here. And it's time that we start, I guess, promoting it. But we do need some buildings downtown. They need to be taken care of so that when people come in our town, it is welcoming. And I believe we've got some things that's gonna be coming up for uh the holidays. And we're gonna have some new things going on for the holidays. And uh we're always looking for volunteers. But I hope that in some way that I can help restore some of our historic places and also educate some of our historic places, and especially to the children. Because I don't really think that they understand our history. And um they are our future. And with history, you need to look back some to look forward. So, thank you.
I do start, I'll do the same. Appoint. Probably moved. In a second. Answer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you. We have uh Mr. Mike Duffy that you will probably see a lot. We have uh public affairs. Mr. Green, would you stand up? Mr. Green, is another resource available? Need extra hands? And you got the man behind the camera, this community outreach cameraman tonight in Main Street. All of the above. So we're all here to support the efforts of the historic district and all of our board of commissioners. Okay, item C, Vicki Carpenter. One, two, three, North Washington. Mr. Pierre, if you give a response.
I have a response for you. Whatever, after you get out, I'll make y'all better, all right?
Ms. Carpenter?
My name is Vicki Carpenter. I'm a volunteer with Keep More House Beautiful. I'm here to, first of all, thank you for letting me be on the agenda. And I wanna thank you also especially for appointing a attorney to represent the city in litigation upcoming concerning one twenty-three North Washington. And welcome aboard, Ms. Ray. Okay. How much, how many of you, does everybody know where one twenty-three North Washington is? It's the building directly across from the visitor center and kind of counter corner from the post office. It's the one that's uh collapsed, the roof caved in. The front fell out, Mr.. Well, I'm here to uh in total support of demolishing the building. And I wanna encourage y'all to do as much as you can to expedite it due to the safety of it. Someone's gonna get hurt. I'll give you a little history. In January of twenty-twenty, KMB had some footage made of downtown Bastrop Historic District. And in that footage from a drone, we saw that the roof was collapsed. So that was in January of twenty-twenty. Well, as a result of that, in February of twenty-twenty-one, the front, the facade of the building caved out in the street and shocked everybody. But at any rate, that's been going on since February of twenty-twenty-one. And it's time to get something done. It's been uh a long ways. You know, a lot of things have happened and I wanna help in any way I can. That's the reason I'm here. Okay, I was asked to bring out a couple of things that need to be done. In the minutes from April the eighth, twenty-twenty-one, the city council meetings minutes, would you please change the address of the property from one twenty-five North Washington to one twenty-three North Washington? The second thing I've been asked to do is to make sure.
Wait just a minute. Was, is that a title?
It was, was it, that was what they did. That is what the address they gave us in the meeting. We stated what was said. The attorney is aware of that, that mistake, but it is that property.
The second thing I've been asked to to do is to inform you that the building inspector, Mr. Larry Wheeler, included in their eight, April the fourteenth, twenty-twenty report that the building should be demolished. And the third thing that I've been asked to request is to allow the historic district or the historic commission to continue with the process of having the building demolished. And I just wanna point out, I'm here in the best interest of the community, in the best interest of keeping a safe community. I mean, here in the best interest of environmental respect, our ecology, taking care of God's creation, or, and also economic development. Just like things you just pointed out, we need a pretty city to attract business. And I'm also here for community pride. Sometimes we are our worst enemy. If we can't say anything nice about our community, it's not always good. It's probably best to keep your mouth shut. All right. And I wanna ask you to do everything you can to expedite this. This would be enforcement of City Code six twenty. And it states, the city may condemn and cause to be demolished or removed any building or other structure within the municipality when it is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition which endangers the public welfare. Does anybody have any questions? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter, um, Ms. Gold, let the record reflect that uh our attorney walked out purposely because it would be a conflict for him to to hear your presentation and act as an environmental judge in this situation. So let's make sure the record reflects that 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 he did step out. And we will follow the due process.
I was very impressed with the attorney that's been applying. Ms. Reese, what was her name?
The attorney that has been secured as a vendor to to represent this case because it poses a conflict. Okay.
She's very nice and things be uh very kind.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us down to item G, Ricky Allen Anderson, Bastrop Police Department District, E, Resolution twenty-two, nineteen ninety-three. Wait just a minute, um. Mr. Anderson, let me, let's get this update from.
Yes, ma'am. I had to step off for obvious reasons.
I had announced where.
Uh, with respect to item uh eleven, eight on the agenda, I did speak with uh uh the attorney for the broadband company, the local council. And I was made aware that they would not be able to make it tonight. They asked that you just defer and they would reach back along to you all and ask to be placed on the agenda again. So they just wanted to pass it or defer. They're not gonna be present. I hope they couldn't get the flight of whatever the situation was, but they're not gonna be present tonight.
And when did they discover that they weren't able to make it?
That answer I didn't get. I was just, just made aware they weren't gonna make it.
All my apologies to those who adjusted their schedule. We will try again because it is such a hot topic at this point in time. And we, we really want to be in the loop of what's going on with broadband. There are so many unknown things about it. We need to uh to listen to a lot of presentations. And I'm going to reach out to the Delta Regional Authority in terms of mapping where are the weak areas in our community to make sure the broadband is available to all of our people within the city limits. Mr. Matthews, did you wanna say something in reference to, okay, I know in the outer bands of the parish, things have taken place and the governor was here earlier. So in the meantime, we will be doing research to offer you more information. Please don't give up. Those of you who adjusted your schedule and come back, things do happen for whatever reason that they were unable to get flights. All right.
Good evening. Ricky Anderson, Bastrop, Louisiana. I'm here to talk about three things on the agenda. Uh Resolution twenty-two, nineteen ninety-three, District E, and the Bastrop Police Department. Uh since my representative is not here, I'm just gonna maintain the Bastrop Police Department and Resolution twenty-two, nineteen ninety-three. Uh brought this to your attention, by the way, excuse me, congratulations, Ray. Um, thank you. Uh I brought this to your attention, I think, since April, about Resolution twenty-two, nineteen ninety-three. So far, I have had no results from this board or this administration when I come before to bring out this topic. Now, twenty-two, nineteen ninety-three is supposed to give the Bastrop Police Department some type of relief in hiring officers and maintaining order here. There's no update on any of this issue in reference to twenty-two, nineteen ninety-three. Mike Tubbs is not here to explain his issue about his report. How many citation? How many arrests? How many disturbance call? Has he answered at six P M. to six A M.? That's the question. What have this administration done? What have the Bastrop Police Department done in hiring officers? And are we still on this six A M. to six P M. working schedule? Twenty-two, nineteen ninety-three is a deplore for the sheriff department to come in and maintain police order. That's not right. I want this board to reexamine twenty-two, nineteen ninety-three and abolish it and put the Bastrop Police Department back in force twenty-four hours, two hundred and sixty-five days a year. We don't know who's hired. We don't know who's working. But the criminals do. Now, back to the Bastrop Police Department. I don't know if it's a policy now or individual check and ask, do I have a weapon on me as I enter into this building this evening? That never happened to me. Now, if these audience out here has been searched or questioned, I need to know. Officer, did you question any of these people? Do they have a weapon, a gun on them?
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm talking to him, man. I'm talking to him.
Order.
Did you?
Order.
How many?
Or.
Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson.
That's not right. You disrespect me. Don't ever do that. You wanna detect, I got a weapon on it? That's what the Ramella Detective's for.
Order.
I'm in order. I'm just giving my order. That's authority talking.
Okay.
That's authority talking.
I am presiding.
No, you're not presiding nothing right now. I'm talking.
Okay.
My minute's not up.
Okay, your time is up.
No, it's not.
Your time is up.
Ma'am, I'm not turning it, ma'am. What's my time? What's my time, ma'am?
Mr. Anderson.
What's my time, ma'am?
Uh.
Mr. Anderson.
You're disinterested in me, so please ask for Mr. Anderson.
Without your respect, you disordered. You out of order. I don't need nobody to escort me nowhere. I come on my own, I can leave on my own.
Go ahead.
I can move.
Go ahead. If you don't, I'm gonna move.
No, you're not gonna move me.
There you go.
Come on, I'm gonna request one more time.
No, I'm moving. Now, you put your hands on me, we gonna have a problem.
No, no. No, I'm not going to jail. I'm moving. We tried to cover everything to not have to expand the agenda, but things do happen. So uh I'm going to ask for a motion to expand the agenda to accept bids for mowers at this time. Probably moved. I accept bids for mowers. Probably moved. Okay, and second?
A second.
Any questions? Okay, Ms. Gold, you wanna speak to that or?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
You gotta, you gotta carry the motion. Okay. Look, we have a question. All in favor, I think, be me.
The council gave us permission to advertise for four mowers for the uh public works. We opened those bids and we had one bidder and it's three D outdoor equipment in Allen Monroe. And his total bid for all four is thirty-seven thousand, four eighty-seven, ninety-six. I don't know if they're called a duty, but I think they are.
They're not very well done, they're not.
Yeah. We really need things really bad. We really need things really bad.
All in favor of accepting this bid?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations again for the works. Okay, did, did we cover everything?
Yes, ma'am. Accept the judgment.
At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Properly moved. And second. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.
Hey, this, uh, this camera, this mic, this video will continue. It will still be recording, so that's why we told to leave it. I'll stop it. Okay.